This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southampton Planning Board meeting for November 6, 2024. All members present, Dan LaValle, Mark Darnold, Stephen Johnson, Paul Forgot, myself, Paul Demon, and we welcome the listening audience on Charter Channel 191. Our first order of business on the agenda tonight was supposed to be a public hearing for a solar installation, a residential one on 138 Brickyard Road. The applicant was Valley Solar for Mark Mancino, who resides at that address. After the review by our consultant, it was quite a laundry list of items that were eliminated regarding the conditions in the bylaw, so it was sent off to the client and they were given the opportunity to come tonight and have those issues presented to them, or they could work on them and come back when they had them resolved. So they opted that they would, asking in an email this afternoon from Adriana Dominguez, the project manager for Valley Solar, "Our design team has requested a continuance until November 20." So is there anybody here in the audience tonight that was in a butter of that Brickyard Road property? No. That being said, then I would ask for a motion that the continuance of that solar hearing be November 20. I'm more than we move the hearing to the next available time board hearing. Second. Motion made by Mark and seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein, I have no idea what you just presented. Except that we'll hear about it on November 20.
You didn't hear that it was for the solar installation that the information you received prior regarding the hearing tonight that came last week in the packet I sent you?
Let's proceed. You just said something about exemptions. There were a whole bunch of exemptions in their application. I think perhaps you mean omissions.
No, I didn't say exemptions. I said that the project was sent to Richard Harris and he reviewed the application.
Yes, I understand that.
And he came up with a laundry list, which I emailed all the members of items missing from the application that are in the bylaw.
Omissions, not exemptions. Thank you.
I didn't say exemptions. I said that were missed.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Chair. I don't want to delay the meeting any further.
So hearing that, the motion passes 401 to continue the meeting to November 20. Second on the agenda tonight, we have a request from Eversource, Jason Ferraro. Are you present tonight, Jason?
Yes.
Jason reached out to me last week to request permission to install a trench for an electrical conduit from proposed pole 25, Manhand Road, and end in front of House Number 33 at the proposed pad location. While performing this construction, Eversource will not be altering any stone walls or damaging or removing any trees. To avoid interfering with the roadside drainage ditches, we are suggesting keeping our trench in the center of the road. Roadway disturbance and changes to traffic patterns may occur during this development. The road will be restored by Eversource to meet or surpass town requirements once work is complete. This has been precipitated by, and this has been going on for about a year now, I would expect, pretty close to it.
Correct.
And what triggered it was scenic road designation because Manhand Road is a scenic road according to the town. However, we don't have a scenic road bylaw in town. We have scenic roads, but we don't have a scenic bylaw. And the only thing we can go by after consulting again with Richard Harris, the board consultant, is Chapter 15C in the Mass General Laws. And...
Chapter 40.
Chapter 40.
Section 15.
"After a road has been designated as a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portions thereof, except within the prior written consent of the planning board. Or if there is no planning board, the selectmen of a town, city council, after a public hearing duly advertised, can take up such action." Now, I understand you went before the Select Board.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm confused on why it got to you in the first place when the statute says it should come here first, but that being said, what was the outcome of that?
They told me to reach out to you guys and have a meeting. A formal meeting.
You don't have to be so brief. You didn't say all of what we requested.
I mean, you guys requested a lot of things. I spoke to somebody on the phone about this before the Select Board meeting. Then I came to the Select Board meeting just to be told I should have went to a formal planning board meeting. So I'm here now for the formal planning board meeting. I'm not sure exactly what you want from me.
It's not a public hearing and the interested parties that were so vocal at the Select Board meeting were told to come to the public hearing at the plan.
One resident is here.
The other ones were expecting a letter in the mail.
I'd make a motion to continue this until proper public hearing is...
Who's the gentleman that just spoke in the back?
So Justin Violette, I live at 34 Manhand Road. I kind of triggered the whole start of this. There was an aerial trespass in my yard. It's no ill will towards my neighbor. It's just something through time that it was time for it to go away. There's a lot of maintenance issues associated with this line, and I think that's more what my neighbors are concerned with. Eversource sort of has an opportunity to do an upgrade to the system at the same time as getting rid of this aerial trespass. And in the interest of the ratepayers, it would be good to allow Eversource to explore that interest of possibly moving what is now currently a right of way of the power lines, what's left, to the road at the same time the aerial trespass. To mention with that, I did send it to Jason. Obviously, everybody on the board has access to it. In the 90s, Eversource upgraded the lower part of the road. During that time, they moved the power lines out of two of the properties to the road. And that was in the 90s when it was already a scenic road. So there's nothing new to allowing, at that time it was WMECO, but allowing the electric company to upgrade their system in a manner that involves cutting trees on the road since they already sent the precedent back in the 90s. So that was kind of all. You know, my neighbors obviously have some concerns, but the underground, I don't think it's a great idea. Our road's narrow. I'll just put that right out there. There's a lot of rock and ledge. Depending on the time of year, school buses start coming up at 7:00. Last school bus for the younger kids is at 8:18 because my kids are the last stop for the last house. They get picked up and then buses start running again at 2:00. My wife's a nurse. She gets called out for emergencies, has to get down the road. The job that I have, I work from home, but I also respond to emergencies for the state. So, and I've done road construction. Jason knows that. I was the manager of Eversource Gas Construction out of Springfield. I know what happens to roads and you can tell crews all day long, don't block the road. Make sure people can get out. I've suspended multiple crews for doing it. You can talk to people in Springfield. So I know that that can be a burden. Overhead work is far better when it comes to doing work on a road, when it comes to the electric.
But Mr. Ferraro, that's not the route that you choose to take, correct? Because of the trees that might have to be altered, damaged, taken down?
Right, so I spoke with somebody. We came up with a plan of a bunch of trees to be removed and the people that came to the Select Board hearing preferred not to have that amount of trees taken down, removed. So we came up with the other plan to do an underground service and restore the road afterwards, so there would be no damage to the trees or the scenery that they were complaining about.
Have you had a conversation with the Highway Department?
Yes, I did speak to the gentleman from the Highway Department. He actually gave me a permit to send to our Hadley office for the crew that would be doing the work to start filling that out.
So another comment from Mr. Harris was, "Absent a local bylaw to the contrary, the planning board would only be involved if Eversource were planning to alter public shade trees or stone walls along a scenic road. Simply putting a line underground does not mean a tree or stone wall will not be altered. They have to put the trench somewhere. I would ask them to demonstrate or certify that the project will not alter a tree or stone wall within the roadway, the right of way, then have the board vote and notify the Select Board that the planning board has determined that the project will not impact public shade trees or stone walls within the right of way. Therefore, the planning board, one, does not have jurisdiction on this matter, and two, has no objection to the project."
There's been no demonstration and there's been no public... Which he's attesting, he's been very oblique.
But what we're dealing with here is the removal of trees or stone walls. That's what we're dealing with here. And if we don't see that, then we sign off on it and if the Select Board wants to take further action, well, that's up to them. And if you want to hold a public hearing, then that's up to you. But that's not what the statute says and that's not what Mr. Harris is recommending and he's been in this business a long time. And furthermore, I'd like to know, and if you can answer it, if you don't have a town bylaw, general bylaw, and there's no conditions tied to that other than the Massachusetts one I just mentioned a while ago, what teeth do you have to restrict them from doing anything?
We have not had a presentation or an attestation as described by Mr. Harris. So whether or not this is the right form, because it's not a public hearing...
And it doesn't require one?
If you're holding an attestation or demonstration that this will not alter the interests of the act, fine. I haven't heard it, including at the Select Board.
What would you propose me to show you? I don't understand what you're asking for.
Turn engineer, engineered drawings, plans, you know?
I think that you have something against me. It seems like every meeting I go to, you let me talk and then you say, you know what? You've got to do this. You know what? You've got to do that. I'm doing everything you're asking me to do. Whether or not you like my company is a different story.
No, 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 no. I love your company.
I don't think you do.
I have a really good friend who's Executive Vice President, Mr. Hunt. So tell me, I hear different stories from you and your predecessor and benefited private party.
Yep.
Benefited private party is talking about some kind of system upgrades. It's always a jelly roll, but...
You should see the moles in my yard.
You've not, you've not made any, you've not made any presentations, so I have nothing against you, except that you're not talking. And if this is purely a private matter, we have no idea why the town is involved.
No, there's no, we are here to petition to install an underground conduit.
Yes.
And one pole.
One pole.
To feed a customer.
One customer.
One customer.
Not this customer.
Nope. We are removing an aerial trespass from this customer's property, a line that was put up without his permission, without actual rights to.
Right.
They, the customer and his neighbors would like our company to remove the poles from their current right of way. At the moment, our company has no intent, there's a, yes, the right of way. At the moment, our company has no interest in relocating the poles in the right of way. None. We have the interest in refeeding one customer that we can no longer feed because of the aerial trespass. This has been going on now for about a year and maybe I messed up. I went through the wrong channels, whatever it may be. I'm trying to resolve this issue and it seems like I'm not getting anywhere. This is the only town I've ever had an issue with trying to move forward with something. So you can see why I think that you have a vendetta against me, which if you do, cool. If not, whatever. But I'm going to be very upfront with you.
Stand up and be an honest applicant, okay?
What wasn't I honest about?
I haven't seen a drawing.
He's honest about them not cutting down trees or altering walls. That's what he made.
He's also been honest about a new pole. I don't know where that is.
There's nothing that says anything about a new pole in the statute. Are you trying to create something that's not, that we don't have any authority over here?
No. So the two issues process and we're going to leave the public hearing to the Select Board.
Here it is again, another comment from Mr. Harris.
And on the factual stuff in the submission, which you read and you transpose our recommendation and his request, but he identified a new pole and a three-foot wide concrete pad and generators, and I don't know where all that stuff is.
I'd like to know how the Select Board can make a recommendation when it was supposed to come to this board to begin with. It should have been, it should have been passed over to us to begin with, but you're making the recommendations when it's our job to do so.
And you're punting.
But you're, you're trying to make recommendations that it was this board's responsibility to do, according to the statute.
The Select Board wanted it to be a public hearing here.
Okay, so here's another comment from Mr. Harris. There is no guidance, there is no guidance in the statute for the planning board to hold a hearing. What is the statute under which a public hearing is to be held? Who are the butters? Whom do you give notice to?
Yeah.
If the Select Board, if the Select Board feels there should be a hearing held, let them hold the hearing. If they get evidence that the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 15C are triggered, then they can direct the applicant to file.
They did.
Then I'm going to ask that we have no evidence. I have the copy of what they're going to be trenching.
Paul, so there's a schematic plan that was attached to an email, correct? That was given to us?
Yep, go ahead.
So the schematic plan identifies the route they're going and they're going down the roadway. You have pulled a trench permit from the Highway Department.
They're working on that, correct?
All right, so...
Is that an engineered drawing that you're looking at?
It's a schematic drawing.
It's an illustration.
It's a schematic drawing.
Okay. And it's never been presented?
It has. I actually sent this drawing.
It's a composite variety of different sources of data. I don't know whether the line they drew is in fact in or outside of the public right of way to you.
Well, I went off of your GIS maps, so if it's not, then your maps are incorrect.
There you go.
Yeah, that's the best information I have.
Okay, can I just, can I just interrupt here?
Look, I'm sorry.
We're being very unproductive. I think we need to...
Yes, sir.
We, we...
We shouldn't be here at all. It's another public hearing.
This, can I? Requesting us to sign off on it.
I don't know.
Don't need a public hearing for that.
Make it.
Don't need a public hearing to have us sign off on it.
Make an amendment. I think that's an abrogation of your responsibility.
I want to hear it, Mr. Forgot. I want to have him finish because he's...
From the Select Board. There are two Select Board members here.
So what's that got to do with anything?
I don't have a vendetta against this person. I don't have a vend...
Steven, this is the planning board, not the Select Board. Okay?
Good night.
Paul, would you finish, please?
You'll get my letter of resignation. You are not being productive.
Paul, would you finish your...
Sure. So, in my opinion, dealing with utility companies and municipalities, this is nothing more than a trench permit that has to be received and executed by the Highway Department.
Exactly.
The fact that it's a scenic road and they're going down the middle of the road to put something in, and they, they're in the record saying that they're not taking any trees down, I don't see what the concern is. He, or Eversource, is part of your trench permit. Do you have to show the town?
I'm not sure what they have to show the town, but the superintendent of the Highway Department sent everything that I sent to the Hadley office to file their stuff.
The Hadley office is responsible, or Eversource, at the end of the day, is responsible to restore roadway conditions to match this roadway cross-section. There's a schematic map that shows point A to point B with approximate distances they're going to be installing.
Correct.
In my opinion, this is something that the town does not have a specific requirement to put in. An engineered drawing has to be stamped by a professional engineer along with survey plans.
Thank you.
You have established protocol that has been done in the town for decades where the utility company has a, or anybody who wants to trench something, has to get a trench permit with the Highway Department. And if it's a scenic road and if there's any impact to existing trees or walls, which they're on the record saying there isn't, then I don't see why we're even having this discussion.
It's big, Dan, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just saying, I agree with that. I think that just having in writing saying it's not a scenic, it's not a, they're not touching any trees or stone walls on the scenic road by going on the roadway, for the perspective of the planning board, shows that it does not meet the qualifications of having to be considered under the scenic road bylaw.
Because, because we have none.
Well, we do have something, because the town had passed something back in the 70s.
Scenic roads?
Yes.
But not a bylaw?
Not the official bylaw. And maybe you refer to the state bylaw.
Well, that's, that's all we, that's all we have, is the state. And there's not, there's not any more than what was there to it. It's not in too much detail, but it just, you know?
Either here nor there. What they're saying is they're not touching the trees or the stone walls, so it's not applicable, either way.
And you're terminating your trench on the subject property at their driveway.
Yes, sir. It'd be right past their driveway. Right. Right next to the pole that's currently there, because that's where the secondary's are. Correct. We're going to actually remove the pole that's there and put a pad mount transformer in its place.
You know, when it comes to, and the other thing that bothers me that's not pertinent here, but it is in a way, but it's not our purview, if there's going to be traffic concerns or road, one-way road or whatever, I'm assuming that's the responsibility of the Highway Department that has some regulations regarding passage to keep one lane open and possibly you've got a, a police officer might be on the scene there or something to direct traffic or to make sure that the road is, is not closed entirely. But that's, again, that's not something we're up against.
So maybe the word we give, the result of this is the word back to the Select Board is saying the planning board has determined that the scenic road bylaw does not, bylaw does not apply in this circumstance.
No, and that's why I will ask for a motion and I will write the Select Board in the morning of that decision. And as Richard Harris said, if the Select Board is not satisfied with that, well, then go for it. But you've got to, you've got to know what you're going after. And I hope you're not going to get sued because you don't have any ground to stand on.
I, from my opinion, not speaking for the Select Board, I agree with all of that. I don't see what they, what...
And what I would recommend is on the general bylaw committee of the town, whomever that chairperson is, to maybe draw up a scenic road bylaw.
I think that is good for the side of the board.
Somebody wants to get more in detail about trenching and digging and roots and anything above, you know, below ground, there's nothing.
That's where the town could be better. And something that the planning board should recommend to the town is clarifying this, the bylaw around scenic roads, because right now, because it is either lost in the history books when it was passed back in the 70s, or we just don't have it on record what the town's ruling is. It becomes gray area, so.
All right. I, yeah. There's a lot of questions in my head, but just for the sake of moving on, I don't see how does a state, how does a bylaw, scenic road bylaw prohibit trenching in the roadway?
So it doesn't. I'm not saying it does.
No, no, I'm saying anybody. How does that hold, how does that hold any legal basis? Because...
If you look at the official, the original approach for this, it was to have, put up telephone poles along the road, which would interfere with trees. Right. Which would, in that circumstance, would impact the scenic road ruling. But they went back and they changed their approach to go onto the road as to not interfere with the trees or the stone wall.
But more than half the road, mind you, and that's why the rest of the people that were at the first meetings, on the last house, all the people that were opposed, where they live, the wires are on the road. They don't drive the part of the road where there are no wires on the road. And after they came on my property and saw the condition of the wires that have been there since the 50s, the poles in my yard that are in terrible condition, they've all decided not to come and be opposed to whatever Eversource is doing. So I'm like, I have two young kids. See that? We couldn't walk out our door for a week because of the wires, because there was a tree laying on the lines and the power wasn't out, so Eversource kept not coming. I finally had to go track down a crew. Yeah. Scary, three face. That's why I walk out my front door.
I want to apologize.
But anyway, so I'm sorry to...
I want to apologize on behalf of this board, the other boards, or however this got going a year ago, and you've had to suffer for it, and Eversource has been trying to scratch their head out and get through it.
And so was the engineer before them.
It seemed to me that the public sentiment at the time was very concerning and then that held up the process and, but for the life of me, I don't know how it didn't come here first formally and then proceed on.
What? What's the mechanism in the state bylaw or the state regulations that would have you approach the town for permission outside of a trench permit?
We always petition, in Springfield, if we're adding ducks to a manhole to feed a new service, we always have to petition for anything we're installing in the public way. So we always request permission to install X, Y, or Z in the public way if it's outside of our eased area. New subdivisions are a little different because when the subdivision's installed, we take an easement over the whole subdivision 10 foot back so we can go in and make repairs or alterations as needed.
But that varies between community and community.
Correct.
Because you might have a blanket agreement with various towns that allow you to put in whatever utility you have.
Correct. But our department still has us go out and, you know, have petition hearings for a number of different items, anything that will be installed in the public way, whether it be an anchor for a pole, a pole, handholds, conduit, you know, manholes, enlarging covers for the manholes.
I want to say, from my perspective, I know that you're doing that in good faith to approach the town, the Select Board. But maybe the planning board's recommendation, another recommendation to the Select Board out of this is when, when Eversource is approaching the town about these improvements they want to make, that it should go to the planning board. I really think it's in the purview of the planning board versus the Select Board. This is really town-specific stuff, but maybe it would be more beneficial to the town if it went to that, to the planning board versus the Select Board for those types of reasons.
Well, without further ado, if there's not any further, Mark, you got anything else you want to add?
Just one side question. Do you require an easement from the town to put the conduit in the middle of the road?
No, I believe the petition grants us the right to put the item in the roadway. And then I do believe it also gives them the right to repair that if something happens to it. So I don't know why your counterpart thought I was trying to hide something, you know? But nonetheless, I've tried to be upfront with everything. The drawings I have on my computer are the same drawings I sent to all the other towns, Springfield, West Springfield, you know, Southwood. Springfield, West Springfield, you know, Southwick, Ludlow. I'm not a surveyor. You know, I try to go off of town GIS maps because the town uses those maps. So that's, you know, what I try to go off of. So they're not always as accurate, but if that's what you use in your town...
I'm going to make a motion that, under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 15 of Mass. General Law regarding scenic roadways, and it does not apply to this request from EverSource because they are not going to be removing trees or altering stone walls of any sort. And it does not require any further hearings of any sort. And that's pretty much it. It goes to motion. Yep, I made it. Any other further discussion? All in favor? It's approved. I will send you an email verifying that. I will copy the select board on it of this decision. Hopefully, they don't pursue it any further. And if they do, that's... I can't control what they do. This board can't. But I don't see... We don't find evidence, and I don't know what they can, grounds they have on if the statute doesn't require it. So good luck. And again, my apologies on behalf of anyone in the town departments that made this difficult and so...
It could have been, our offices revolving door as well, so we...
Anyway, good luck with it.
I appreciate everyone's time. Thanks.
I had some mail come in that's not on the agenda, but it was... A letter came in this afternoon. If you recall, Paul wasn't here, but a couple of weeks back, we had an A&R on Palmory Meadow Road for a lot that was, in fact, it's across the street from me, Lady Subdivided. And I received a call from the Realtor a couple of weeks ago. The lot was sold. And then the question came up, the lady took it out of Chapter...
61?
61b. She took it out a couple of years back. But then, this is one thing that's wrong with the A&R, too. It doesn't have any language in a paragraph if the land is in 61a or b. So she files an A&R and didn't realize, and the... After we approved the A&R and it went to the assessors, I would have expected the assessors to say something, but they didn't. Because they already knew it was out, because it was filed at the registry, I guess. But they can't close on the property because it wasn't officially done through the planning board, which then goes through the select board. We have to waive our right of first refusal for that parcel officially. And then it goes to select board to... I think Open Space looks at A&R as now, too. Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to mention, so this came to the Conservation Commission, because those Chapter 61 things, right of first refusal, go to the Conservation Commission.
That's right, too.
So we looked at it last night, and we looked, there was no wetlands or anything there. So we had no interest in any right of first refusal as from the Conservation Commission.
So we signed off on the A&R, so officially now we're being asked to waive our right of first refusal, that we have no interest in that parcel, because it's not connected to anything really. It is actually, a piece of it is connected to that new conservation area on the Courtney property on Palmory Meadow Road. However, they have their own entrance and access off of Palmory Meadow themselves. So could I have a motion that we waive our right for Lot 3r on Palmory Meadow Road?
So moved.
Motion made by Paul and seconded by Dan. All in favor? Thank you. I have a warrant tonight. Richard Harris submitted his bill, you have that in your packet, for his services for September and October 2056-92. Approximately half of that is coming out of ARPA funds because it's for zoning work we've been doing. And the other balance of that comes out of our regular revolving fund. So I'm asking for approval for his invoice of 205692.
I move that we accept the invoice from Richard Harris for 205692.
Second.
Motion made by Mark and seconded by Dan. All in favor? So that's... Any other reports from anybody on committees or just comments in general?
That was the thing I mentioned about the Conservation Commission was the only thing I was going to bring up about that Chapter 60 land.
Palmory Meadow, yeah.
Yep. So there's that.
And I think I mentioned the last meeting, too. George Russell's now asked for any solar ground mount installations to get the plans on, just so he can verify there's no wetlands issues or anything wherever the placement's going to be. So having no other business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.